Good evening. It is 7:00 PM, and I am the Town Clerk, Vicki Wellers-House. I have a few statements for the record before we get started. Tonight's regularly scheduled Town Council work session is a virtually meeting. Next week's meeting will be a public hearing, and individuals are encouraged to participate and to provide public comments for the record. The work session this evening is conducted electronically pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3708.2 as amended, the Governor's executive orders as amended, and Ordinance 20-023, Continuity of Governmental Operations During Pandemic Disaster COVID-19 as amended. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with the Code of Virginia, along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record. The agenda and meeting materials are available on the town's website. The electronic meetings will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum, and all votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. I do need to let the public know that earlier this evening, the council went into a closed session, and no action was taken within that closed section. I will reconvene our September 1 Town Council work session and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Town Manager Bill Ashton?
Town Manager Bill Ashton is present.
Town Attorney Lisa Yates?
Town Attorney Lisa Yates is present.
Vice Mayor Olom?
Vice Mayor Olom present.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker present.
Councilmember Del Agula?
Del Agula present.
Councilmember DeCall?
DeCall present.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs present.
Councilmember McKenna?
Bill McKenna present.
Mayor Merkel?
Lisa Merkel is present. So we do have a quorum, and everyone is here this evening. Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. For the record, we do have a quorum. As stated by the clerk, we are conducting this meeting electronically pursuant to the appropriate laws due to the pandemic. All members of council, as usual, will physically raise your hands so that I can call on you for comments, and try to remember to state your name before providing comments or making or seconding a motion. First off, I will recognize our Town Manager, Bill Ashton, to provide an update on the continuity of operations and matters related to the emergency. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Bill Ashton, Town Manager. Just wanted to give you all an update on some information that I've received between the regular meetings we have with Dr. Gloria at County Health and other information I'm getting from the NVRC. I just wanted to share some of that with you. The Fairfax County and the Northern Virginia Health Districts have seen a little bit of an increase in cases since mid-July, probably the last time we had talked. It was, there was some trending, but it was very scant. They are saying they're trying to pinpoint where the increases are happening in the county. They are operating under the assumptions are coming from the Richmond Highway area and Springfield, and then Herndon is also listed on the report as well. Dr. Gloria attributes this to as restrictions have been eased, workforce age groups are going back to their workplaces, and that is where we're seeing it. Interestingly, the shift to the affected people are between the ages of 20 and 39 statewide. They're seeing the same trend nationally, but it is not playing out quite the same way in Fairfax County. As a matter of fact, we're seeing a decrease in the proportion of the cases in our Hispanic community countywide, which is a welcomed piece of news. It's still not good, but it's better than it had been. Unfortunately, they're seeing increase in the African-American populations of the county, and there are other groups that have self-identified as "other." That's where they're also seeing the increases to date. Dr. Gloria encourages everybody, and I encourage everybody, to continue doing what we have been doing, wearing face masks when we're in public, washing our hands, staying home when you're sick. All these things are critical, and when you're sick, seeking a test, which are much more readily available than they were at the beginning of the pandemic. The other thing that County Health is working on, and she talked to me about enlisting some help from the town, is to find community leaders to help amplify the message in some of our most at-risk communities. They want to start targeting efforts, PSA, social media, with community partners. They realize not one size fits all, that various different communication channels work better with various demographic groups, be it age, be it income, be it race and ethnicity, and they want to try to tailor messaging to get these words out. They are asking all folks that are symptomatic to seek testing and care. It is much easier these days for people to be tested, and they're trying to go where the cases are. They contact trace to a particular location, a particular, and to the example she gave me, a church in Annadale. They went in and did a full-blown test of all the churchgoers for that church, just to make sure that they identified them in an earlier place. As I said a few minutes ago, they're trying to work with community partners to go with cases, where they're seeing cases clustering. They intend to target places like apartment complexes. They want to start, instead of just doing one of these community testing events, they want to target apartment complexes where they're seeing an increase in cases. They also want to look at day labor sites as a potential place to do a little bit more aggressive testing. One of the part of the contact tracing, and something for folks to understand, is they, if you have been in contact with somebody who has COVID, they're saying between day five and day seven after the contact is when you should be sent for testing, and if you have no transportation to get there, County Health will come pick you up and take you for testing. So, and Fairfax Health right now is completing their tests in under 24 hours. Another item that came up just earlier today is a reminder, and it's a very good reminder for all. Get your flu shots this year. It's imperative because the hospitals cannot be stressed with flu patients and potential resurgence of COVID patients. So it is imperative upon us to get our flu shots this year. I know that the town staff are all given free, are going to be given free shots. We've arranged for that, and notice just went out on that, I think earlier today, as a matter of fact, or not yesterday. So, but I encourage everyone to get your flu shots this year, and also kind of remain hopeful that they are effective, because sometimes flu shots are not as effective as other years. That is all I have at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. What questions do councilmembers have for the Town Manager? Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, this is Sheila Olom. Mr. Town Manager, did they discuss which zip codes in Herndon were higher? I have been asked that by several people in town. They want to know, is it in town, is it outside of town, or is it the whole thing?
The State Health Department made a determination early in COVID not to go down to anything lower than zip code. They felt that that would cause community panic, it would be a potential violation of privacy, because you might get a zip code where one person could be, say, southwestern Virginia, that you would know who that person was based on that. So they took the stance of, let's just go down to zip code, not go down any further than that, as a means to help protect medical privacy and also a means to not incite panic in communities.
I understand that, but we have more than one zip code for Herndon. Are they getting us?
You can, and as a matter of fact, the 20170 zip code is among the Herndon zip codes that is the highest since the beginning of the pandemic. That has been the highest number of infections per 100,000 people in the Herndon zip codes. It's run between 5th and 6th in the county throughout the entire pandemic. Gloria, when I talked to her, did not go into which Herndon zip code is a driver right now, but I assumed it was the 20170 zip code, because that one had been flagged time and time again, and that was also a key piece of information that allowed me to co-op County Health to get them to be responsive in our zip code.
Okay, thank you. And also, anyone listening, that 20170 is not just in the town, it goes outside the town.
There are 43,000 people in the 20170 zip code, of which only 24/8 live in the town of Herndon, yes.
Thank you.
Certainly.
That's a good statistic to know. What other questions do we have for the Town Manager? I know we're going to go into more depth on this on our first item, but did I see you, Ms. Friedrichs?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I turned it on. You referred to Dr. Gloria wanting us to push out, or wanting us to find community leaders to help push out their message. Can we get messages sent to us that we can then share out? And also, a lot of the time, we get messages shared as a PDF or a, as a, yeah, what do I want to call it? Anyway, in ways, a constant contact message that are hard to share on social media, and so I guess any, any social media, I mean, sorry, any messages that you want us to get out, are you going to send them to us, or what?
I can have Ann work with you all on the best form. We have a slew of things that we've put together in various languages that we would be glad to give out for you to give out. What they're targeting here is a more direct approach. They want leaders or people in the community that will work with County Health, that say, let's take a day labor situation, that the folks that gather there trust. They want to be able to have somebody they know and trust go in there and explain to them the importance of social distancing, the importance of masking, the importance of these things, and potentially start getting more masks into the situation. They want to use that as a conduit. That's what she was talking about. But as far as the collateral material, we will get that to you in any way you like to have it. So I will talk to Ann in the morning and see what we can put together for you.
Thank you so much. That's great.
Certainly.
Sorry, Mr. Del Agula, I apologize. I need the shirt that says "You're on mute." Sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Ashton, thank you so much for that. We had talked about communicating with Dr. Gloria, and just to let people know, it's difficult to go into an area, specifically the ones that we're talking about, and kind of like just swarm it with information. That's probably not the best way to get the message out. And Bill and I have communicated how we best think that could be accomplished, and I'm certainly making myself available to help. So we're starting that, and I just want to let the rest of the council know that it's my hope that we have more of a consistent channel to those groups. I think we've established some trust over the last couple of years, and I look forward to working with Dr. Gloria and that team to certainly inform everyone that needs the information. So thank you, Bill, for making that happen.
No, thank you. And again, trust is enormously important, and again, we talk about it all the time. Relationships are one of the most important things to getting things done, so you have to leverage the relationships where there's a great deal of trust built up, and that's, and I applaud Gloria for that approach. And when she briefed it to me, it just, it kind of bounced out as, yes, that's how you reach, because you're exactly right. I can roll in there with town staff, and they're going to look at me like, I don't know who you are, I don't trust you, but we need to make sure that we're getting that very positive message, very important message, to them in a way to where, again, part of messaging is sender, message, medium, and receiver. We need it to where the receiver actually receives it, and we can't lose sight of that, and that's why I think this is very powerful with Dr. Gloria's proposal.
We are really fortunate to have her.
100%.
Any other questions or comments on what the Town Manager shared, anybody? There's been an update, and WebEx looks different to me tonight. I don't know if it looks different to you guys, but I'm getting used to it. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. I will ask the clerk if we have received any comments for the record on any items that are listed on the agenda this evening.
No, Madam Mayor, we have not.
Okay, and I will also ask whether or not the clerk has received any transactional disclosure declarations from any council members on any items this evening.
No, Madam Mayor, we have not.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to our general items. There are no public hearing items on the agenda tonight, so we'll move straight into the general. The first item is to amend and re-adopt Ordinance 20023 to implement procedures and effectuate temporary changes to address continuity of governmental operations during the pandemic disaster COVID-19, and to supersede previously adopted amendments. I will recognize Lisa Yates, our Town Attorney, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Lisa Yates, the Town Attorney. You will remember back on March 24, the Town Council adopted our current continuity of government ordinance, 23023, pursuant to the authority granted by the Code of Virginia. It required, it allowed us to operate through a temporary method to assure continuity of government in the event of a disaster like the COVID-19 disaster. The town's continuity of government ordinance was amended twice, once in April and then again in May, to adjust to the disaster as it unfolded. The original ordinance, as originally drafted, provided for a six-month duration. That six-month duration, believe it or not, is ending here very soon. Due to the continuing nature of the disaster, it is necessary to amend and reenact this ordinance to extend its duration to the full extent allowed by the Code of Virginia, and that would be six months following the conclusion of the disaster. Typically, a conclusion of a disaster is the lifting of the state of emergency by the governor, town, or both. This particular amendment and reenactment will include all of the continuity of government provisions in one ordinance. Previously, as I said, they were laid out in the original ordinance and two amendments. What it will do is allow discussion of a broader range of topics by council to include bringing back online all of the substantive types of items that you used to see, amendments to the zoning ordinance, amendments to the town code, other fiscal and legal items. Also, general public comment will be reinstituted, and originally, we had to suspend that because we did not have the ability to do that. Now we do. So we will reinstitute general public comment. This reenacted ordinance also specifies certain land development approvals that are extended during the emergency, and continues to provide the Town Manager with the authority, emergency authority, to sign legal and negotiable instruments necessary for the continuity of government. All of these amendments together, we believe, through the readoption of the ordinance, will promote further continuity of government and allow government functions to extend further on until at least, or as far as six months following the end of the disaster. I think most significantly, council is looking forward to being able to discuss a broader range of topics and to hear from constituents. So we're asking that you approve this ordinance next week, and it will take effect immediately thereafter, which would mean that the following set of meetings would be conducted under the new continuity of government ordinance. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Friedrichs?
Madam Town Attorney, are there any items that we're not allowed to discuss that, how can I put this better? Before we went into electronic and state of emergency, there were no items we couldn't discuss. Is that going to be the case now, if we approve this, or are there still items that are off limits to us?
So for example, to explain maybe a little bit more specifically to this instance, the continuity of government's ordinance as adopted in March limited council discussion to substantive, critical governmental function-type issues. We are essentially returning to the state of affairs prior to the adoption of the ordinance regarding what council can discuss. There may be things that council, by consensus, decides not to discuss that would just, that would be the same as it was prior to the adoption of the ordinance, but I hope that answers your questions in the context of this disaster.
Yeah, it answers my question and adds extra, so thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the Town Attorney, anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. This is Sheila Olom. Madam Town Attorney, about how many state code updates are we looking at? Because we haven't done any since the end of the session, and we always have a lot of those.
Actually, not as many as you think pursuant to General Assembly action. I can think of two right off the top of my head. Now, that is in stark contrast to the number of zoning amendments and amendments that were just simply waiting in line to go as soon as the budget was over with. So we have a backup from COVID, as well as things that we typically put off until the budget discussions end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, anybody? No? Okay, so thank you. So I'm going to follow where the Vice Mayor was going with that. I can imagine, I mean, it's been almost six months that we have had a lot of normal town business kind of on hold that didn't fit the criteria for the emergency, so I guess it will be up to us to determine sort of how we start approaching those topics and in what order, because some of it, I would assume, is more timely than others, and I guess I'm gearing us up for some long agendas coming up, I would guess.
Yes, I would say that the Town Manager and I have talked about some of the things that are on deck. I would say that they're going to be fairly heavy agendas, just in order to get us where we should be.
All right. And just to clarify, you did say that public comment will be reinstated as the general public comment, as we were before, but now in this virtual format?
Yes, and I would expect that would begin on September 22.
Okay, and do we have a plan for, I'm sure we do, but what is our plan for getting that message out to the public and making sure everybody knows how to do it? Because I know that we've had that, but we haven't had a lot of public input, and I think some of it is probably because that general comment isn't there, but also people have been very concerned about themselves and their families and the pandemic and their jobs, and maybe this is their priorities in other places, but I think that's certainly going to change. So I guess maybe that's a question for the Town Manager, and maybe the answer is next week, but how are we going to try to reach out?
I'm going to have to defer to the Town Manager.
We would look at this as like anything related to COVID, where we would do a comprehensive push, both in terms of social media, on our website. We would certainly create a place for folks to call and seek assistance on how they can do it. And again, I'll applaud the clerk's office, and I know, and I'm sure Vicki is like not ready to have an hand or a wrist as I'm talking about this. They've been very good at working with our residents and helping them participate, and we will go and we will do whatever we need to do to make sure the word gets out, and we help them navigate this as best they can.
Thank you. Other questions for Lisa, or I guess Bill, on this item? Okay, thank you very much. This will be great to get back to business. Next up is our several resolutions. The fifth item is Resolution 20G30 through 20G36 to ratify extensions of license pursuant to Ordinance 20023 for the use of public property for temporary outdoor dining between the town and Green Lizard, Jimmy's Old Town Tavern, Mile 20, Red Kumono, Russia House Restaurant, Sully's Core House, and Zefarelli Restaurant, each having their own corresponding resolution number. And I will recognize Lisa Yates once again for this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. As you will recall, back in late May, Northern Virginia entered Phase 1, which allowed restaurants to operate outdoors at a reduced capacity. At that time, the town sought ways to assist town businesses, restaurants, in reopening by streamlining the requirements for outdoor dining, the approval process. The streamlined process provided for three types of outdoor dining scenarios: private property, town side rocks, right-of-way, and pub-town-public parking lots. As a result of that process, the Town Manager signed seven license agreements with establishments that sought to use town property to have outdoor dining. Those agreements had a timeline of 100 days from the date of signing. All of those agreements are going to be expiring before your meeting next week. Those licenses, the date of those licenses could not be extended without the Town Manager signing a temporary, another temporary license agreement extension with those businesses, which he did, and which we are asking you to ratify as you did the original license agreements. So those have all been finalized and signed by the Town Manager and the restaurant owners, and we are going to ask that you ratify them at the meeting next week, so that the outdoor dining may continue through this period up until no later than November 30 of this year.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa on this item? Sheila?
Thank you. This is Sheila, Madam Town Attorney. So just to clarify, so anyone watching or listening or reading this, and they don't see their restaurant on this list, such as Anita's Restaurants in the Kmart Shopping Center, et cetera, they're not here because they're not on town property. They have to just work with the owner of the property, so we're not leaving them out.
We're not leaving them out. They did not, they did not have the requirement that their agreements be signed by the town. I will say this, that they should check with the zoning administrator to make sure that their agreements are still valid and do not need any other sorts of adjustment due to expiration of time or some other reason.
Would, so we probably don't have any staff here tonight that can tell us whether or not those other, oh, I see the town.
I was going to ask if Dennis could reach out to those restaurants. He probably already has, but Ms. Ashton?
You are reading my mind, Madam Mayor. I was going to suggest I'll have Dennis begin reaching out to those restaurants and talk to the zoning and be, and put him in the same position he was in when we put this into place. He kind of served as the clearinghouse point of contact and budsman for the process. He was just instrumental in getting this done. I will put him in charge of going back to those restaurants that are not on public lands and making sure that they are covered for as long as they need to be covered.
Okay, good. We just don't want somebody all of a sudden getting shut down. Thank you.
I would add, Madam Vice Mayor, that their agreements with their landlords may have had different terms that we're not aware of, so that's, I'm just covering every possible scenario with my answer.
Okay. Thank you. The Vice Mayor took all my questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Cesar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, thank you for that update, and again, I think everyone supports this. A little off-topic, were we able to sort of think about next year and how we might facilitate this, starting at some month? Is that something that we can prepare for over the next few weeks or months here?
I think that what I know about it, we would have to account, yes. So that is being thought about. One of the largest items that we have to account for is public shared parking in the downtown. The individual restaurants that are using parking spaces, those parking spaces are part of the public shared parking in the downtown area, which is purchased by individual businesses to provide parking for their patrons. But I don't want to speak for the Town Manager, but I do believe that is being considered, whether it can work or not.
Thank you, Madam Town Attorney. This is Bill Ashton, Town Manager, again. Yes, it is being considered. As a matter of fact, I took copious notes when we were having a discussion on this at a council meeting, and I was getting your feedback, and there were several really interesting ideas that were thrown around about creating vitality in the downtown, and we are looking at ways to try to do that, fully understanding that we have some constraints on us. Some of the constraints relayed to public shared parking. What other options do we have to meet that, those requirements while we're trying to -- While we're trying to also invigorate, because again, outdoor seating invigorates anyplace, in my humble opinion. If I'm given the opportunity, even pre-COVID, if I was given the opportunity to eat outside and it's 50 degrees or eat inside, I'm eating outside. It's just what I do. So we're looking for ways to do that for next year. I'm sure we will be talking to you all in the throes of winter about what we plan to do moving into next year.
Sounds good. I appreciate that. I know it's a little off topic. I just wanted to also confirm for the folks that might be listening that you are taking person. And if you want to have that discussion outside, anywhere, over a drink, I'm there too.
And I think that also, I will just add that the regional conversations that the town managers and city managers and mayors and chairs are having, trying to coordinate and do similar things across the board. And we've also helped each other, because Alexandria, for one, has been way on top of a lot of things. They have a great, I don't know which department does it, but they always have the flyers and the information all together that they have really shared with everybody to be able, on a variety of topics. So I'm sure we'll get some help from our regional partners as well. So excited about that. Hope for a warm winter. Any other questions on this? My only question is, could we put this on consent agenda for next week? Does that work for everybody? All right. Thank you. Then next up is Resolution 20G37 to establish the Herndon Town Council meeting schedule for January 1st through December 31st, 2021. And we typically do this one year at a time. And the town clerk is here, Vicky Baller's house, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's just a few simple changes that were made in light of the 2021 calendar. The first change is in, to allow the council's participation in National Night Out, is to reschedule the council work session on Tuesday, August 3rd to Wednesday, August 4th. The second change is to reschedule the town council work session on Tuesday, November 2nd to Tuesday, November 9th to allow participation in the 2021 state election. Last year, we proposed to reschedule the work session to the Wednesday, but when I went back and reviewed the record, the council had proposed that we just do it the following Tuesday instead of doing it on Wednesday. And then forego the second town council work session and public hearing in November to allow for Thanksgiving travel. These are only suggestions, and I'm here for any questions or comments the council may have.
Okay, Sheila?
So one question. My understanding was the chief had said, except for this is COVID, that they had planned to change National Night Out this year to, I believe it was October. So maybe we need to check with the chief and find out if that is going to be changed to October for next year?
You mean for 2021?
For 2020, next year is 2021, right? Okay.
Well, yeah, I'm just clarifying, because it's also this year.
Because if they, if they're going to change it, then we'll have the calendar done, and it'll be the wrong thing. And I know a lot of people depend on that calendar, including me, to see what's going on.
I can verify that.
And if that changes, just make sure we get a note for our next meeting so we can be reminded.
Okay.
Thanks. I saw someone's hand, but then everybody moved around. Okay, Signe, there you go.
The calendar on Election Day for next year. Hold on, I need to zip over there before I ask my question.
So do I. Okay, there it is, yes.
All right, so... I guess this is more a question for the town manager. Is that going to throw you all off to have two fewer, or one fewer, public hearing in the month of November? Because that's when we tend to have lots and lots of activity.
The past several years, we've only had one work session and one public hearing in November. So I don't know if it has been a problem.
It's... Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'm Phil Ashen, Town Manager again. I don't think it'll be a problem, but this is going to be a challenge for us to make sure that we cross-level the workload into October and September. And as long as we know in advance what we're dealing with, we're able to cross-level and do it appropriately and make sure that we have an agenda that isn't so heavy on that one November public hearing, when we could put it, push it to December or potentially move it up to October. So we'll work with it. I'm not overly concerned about working with it.
My only concern is that in October, we usually end up going to VML. And I don't know if that's going to be happening next year. It depends on finances and COVID. But that does sort of tend to push things and squeeze them around, so...
But it's also in Lansdowne next year.
Never mind.
Which makes it a little easier for us.
Never mind. Okay, thank you.
So if I could, if that is a concern, and I don't know that it is, since it's not a town election next year, having the work session the day after the state election day might work. And then we would have the next, then we would have two extra weeks if the workload was such that we needed to have those extra meetings. I don't know if it's a big enough concern for the council to make a switch like that, but looking at the calendar, it looks feasible.
We've done this, oh, this is Olem.
Yeah.
We've done this for the last several years, and it did not seem to be a problem. As the town manager said, they usually can lighten, you know, pull the things in there so that... Except for the fact that we had a COVID and we didn't get to... We're going to feel really, really jammed up this fall, but...
Exactly.
I don't think that's normally going to be as bad.
I was just offering a suggestion. Cesar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Cesar. So again, my personal opinion is just, it's Election Day. We kind of like, you know, should let that kind of like be special. And I'm okay with kicking it back a week. Another thing I wanted to ask is, I thought we discussed activities at the community center on Election Day being canceled for the day. Is that in place, or is that something we're going to do next year as well? I think it helps people voting if there's not a lot of people hitting the parking lot and doing classes and all that other fun stuff, so I'd like to know about that.
I agree.
Madam, Madam Mayor, it's, that's, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, schools are closed on Election Days for that precise reason. So it just eliminates a lot of the confusion, a lot of the other buzz that's going on. That is something we need to do.
Anybody who hasn't spoken that has a question or comment? I think I saw Signe again.
Just wanted to mention that when we do meet during the, during Election Week, we usually meet on a Wednesday, so I wasn't planning on removing the specialness of Election Day, but thank you.
That's what I was implying too, on the Wednesday, yep. Anybody else? So I have a couple, actually, I have three calendar things to mention, but they are about 2020. So would it be more appropriate for me to bring those up at Roundtable? Or since we have Vicky here talking about calendars in general, should we... Should I do that now? Anybody? You want me to do, Vicky says yes? All right, I listen to Vicky.
It would be easier, easier for me now.
Okay. So do we know, the Vice Mayor mentioned National Night Out in October. Do we know if it is still happening on this year on, not December, October 6th? Because if it is, that's a Tuesday, and we would need to change our schedule to have our meeting on Wednesday, the 7th.
I will defer to the town.
If we plan to participate.
I will defer to the town manager. I have not received a confirmed date yet. I will be talking to the chief tomorrow, but that has not been confirmed with me, no.
Okay, so maybe if you're calling about next year, maybe she knows about this year.
I'll find out tomorrow.
As well, and then we can do what we need to do.
Yes.
The second thing was, we had previously, I believe, scheduled our, let me make sure. Yes, our first, is it the first? Yes, our first work, or public hearing in October was supposed to be on the 13th, which is a Wednesday, because that had been scheduled to be VML.
Oh, the 14th. We had taken the 13th and moved it to the 14th.
On a Thursday?
The 13th is Tuesday.
Correct.
Sorry, I'm in 2021. My bad. Sorry, okay, you're right. The 13th, and we had moved it to the 14th. Now, the, I don't know if this has been communicated to council yet or if VML has even gotten the word out yet, but now the VML conference is virtual, and it's going to be on October 7th and 8th, which would not impact our schedule. So do we want to consider moving our public hearing back to Tuesday so that it's less confusing for the public, especially since now we're going to allow public comment? I don't know if that takes council action, but it's just something I, do we think we should do that?
This is Olem. I think it does take council action, because we have changed dates during the report for...
So that, if it, I think you're correct. So if we would want to put that on our next, oh, Madam Town Attorney, it'd need to go on our next.
Yes, we can put it on your, if there's a consensus, we can put it on the next agenda.
Is there consensus? Okay, let's do that, because I want to be as little, as, not as, as unconfusing as possible. And the final thing was, this was brought to my attention today, that I believe that the state, the General Assembly has now, either the General Assembly or the governor has declared Election Day a state holiday. Is that correct? And if it is, does that mean that the state employees are off and it's a paid holiday? That's my first question. And if that is true, is that something that the town of Herndon should consider doing as well? It costs money. It's about $60,000-ish for a paid holiday, or at least the last time we added Veterans Day. So I know that we don't have a lot of money with COVID this year, but I wanted to throw that out. I guess first to the town attorney, like, should we do that? How do we go about that? Is it something, or if the council thinks it's a terrible idea, then you don't have to answer all those questions.
Madam Mayor, this is Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. I would defer to the town manager. That is totally administrative matter. And I'm glad he's leaning back and smiling. Worried I was going to answer that one.
Oh, sorry. I called on the wrong person. Mr. Ashen.
No, I just want to thank my colleague, the town attorney, for batting that ball back over the net to me, and appreciate it. Yeah, generally, holidays average about $55,000 to $60,000. And what that is paying for is police overtime on what is considered minor holidays, lesser holidays. We still pick up trash on those days, just so we don't fall behind, especially on a Tuesday. That is a refu, that's recycling day, and it is very difficult for that to be spilled into the next day. So we would bring crews in to do recycling on holiday pay for that as well. That's how you accrue that level of cost associated with a holiday. It can be handled, just because it's a state holiday, it does not automatically mean it's a town holiday. It is a decision that we have to make ourselves. There are some national holidays that we, that we don't recognize, but there are some holidays we have the day after Thanksgiving that other governments don't recognize. And that's truly on our schedules. Juneteenth was an example of something that came up this year quickly and we administratively adapted to. I could equally make an administrative call with your council and guidance.
So Mr. Town Manager, if we administratively made that call, that would be just for this year, because to actually change a holiday, that's in the code and would take council action, I believe.
Yes, yes. The holidays, and again, we can look at other ways to do that to where we can incorporate it by reference or something. But yes, all the holidays are in the code themselves. But there is some discretion that I'm given in the code that allows me the ability to declare a holiday if, and I would certainly never do that without council's counsel.
All right, perfect. I see you, Jen.
Yeah, I would just say, so I'm not, I don't support giving this as a holiday this year. I think given how, especially with COVID, we're making it, I think the state has done a great job of making absentee voting without excuses. Like, there's a lot of ways to make sure folks vote. Certainly, voting is incredibly important, but I think we've offered a lot of that. And I think, especially since we did give Juneteenth at the last minute, it's expensive, and I would prefer that we do not have that as an impromptu holiday. If we want to think about it for future, sure, but my opinion would be it should not be a holiday this year.
Thank you. Whose hand did I say? Sheila?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we should have that as a holiday, because most employers, when the voting is in November, do give their employees leeway to either come in late or leave early to make it to the polls, especially in this area, because if you don't leave on time and you're voting on Election Day here. I've had too many friends and neighbors that did not make it back, and it was traffic.
Anybody else? Signe?
I just want to support what Councilmember Baker said. We threw in Juneteenth at the last minute without really considering the financial costs, or well, without considering the...
We get that in.
I know. But spending an extra $120,000 this year spontaneously is a tough sell for me. I mean, we're not giving, I mean, I could see giving people time to go and vote. That would be fine, but the holiday pay, no, not this year.
Anybody else? Priti?
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Frederick, that this year, because of the national situation we're going through, I do not think that... You know, people will find out a way to vote, and especially like Vice Mayor said, you know, most of the employers always allow employees to either come late or leave early because of the election. So, and also, you know, since we're talking about, you know, mail-in ballot and all those other forms, I do not think we really have to give a holiday this year.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, I think in, probably any other year, I would be all over this, but I concur with my colleagues. And it's just a strange year. A lot of people working from home anyway, so maybe, maybe this is something to consider next year. But I did want to, I didn't want it to pop up on us in the middle of October and not having considered whether or not we should do it. So thank you for that discussion. I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on the actual resolution we're discussing? I was going to say we should put that on consent, but it sounds like we may have some questions to clarify about National Night Out next week, so we'll keep that on general. Does that work for everybody? All right, moving right along. We have reached Roundtable. So who would like to speak? Our last time, limited to continuity of operations or matters elected to the emergency. Everybody will wait till next time. Is there anybody? Signe?
So some citizens have asked me a couple of questions that I thought might be useful starting places. One citizen asked what we can do to help small businesses in the town. And I said, you know, we, you know, the outdoor dining is one thing, but, and, you know, definitely helping people get ahold of federal money wherever we can is great. And some, and, you know, related to that is the question of how can the town provide support for small businesses, particularly in their advertising? And I know that we don't advertise for businesses, but I have to wonder if there are some creative ways. You talked about, Madam Mayor, you talked about Alexandria's, you know, literature to help support their, their town, so, or city. Is there anything that, can we think outside the box at all in terms of how the town can provide more? I don't want to call it advertising, but that's what it is. Maybe with website games or, you know, some way of drawing people to our list of businesses. I just, I feel like there's, I know we've traditionally not done those sorts of things. We've said, well, you know, this is all about... We've said, well, you know, this is all about, um, you know, uh, private enterprise and so forth. But if we could think of anything, if we could think hard about how we can help other kinds of businesses than restaurants or help other, help restaurants as well.
Mr. Town Manager, I believe that the Economic Development Department has put together a list of Herndon businesses. I saw something in a news you can use or something. I didn't make that up, did I?
No, you didn't make that up.
It was listed.
No, you did, you didn't make that up. Um, we, we have done that and we have also worked with HCTV to produce, uh, now two, uh, just Herndon's Open for Business, um, kind of more, Herndon's Open for Business, but we've highlighted different, uh, different businesses from different sectors on this and we're continually doing that as we move forward. Um, the next time, we're going to grab 10 new businesses and highlight them as well. We're going to continue to do that. It's just a matter of, I mean, there's, there's certain things we have to observe legally. Uh, we can't advertise for them. We can't be an advertising arm for them. That said, we are trying to seek ways for us to, to advertise Herndon as a place that is open for business in, in, in general. And then if we can highlight some, some other specific businesses in there, we're, we're trying to find ways to do that. But, and again, a lot of it is Dennis continues to reach out to businesses. Uh, we continue to, uh, continue communications to try to determine what we can do. In addition to the outdoor seating, some of the other things we were doing is relaxing the sign ordinance. One of, that's one of the first superpowers I exercised was to relax the sign ordinance to give them greater latitude in advertising that they're open, that they're, 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 that they are, you know, ready to take customers. Um, and there's, there's additional latitude just in, in street signage, um, in that regard. Uh, so we're, we're looking for other ways as well. Have we been completely successful at this? Uh, no, I think the work still needs to be done. Uh, we are looking at other jurisdictions. Unfortunately, the material that we talk about in Alexandria, that is all public health driven. And that's, that's, and it's in multiple languages and we just, and we take it, we reskin it and then we send it out as our own. But as far as them advertising businesses, uh, there's nothing I've seen out there in other jurisdictions per se, uh, for this. They've been doing pretty much the same things we're doing. As a matter of fact, I talk to all my regional counterparts once a week on a Zoom. I talk to all the, my Fairfax counterparts once a week on a Zoom, in addition to being on the mayors and chairs calls once a week on a Zoom, or on a, just a telephone call and dialing. Um, and there is, I, I think we're all kind of struggling for good ideas on how to do this.
Is the restriction on, um, our advertising for, uh, businesses in town, the fact that we can't advertise for all of them? Or is it, um, just a, a restriction period? I mean, is there any way that we can, um, I don't, I don't really know what the legal, uh, framework is that, that denies us that.
So I'm going to take that ball and bounce it back over the net and return, return serve to my, uh, to my, my counterpart in the, from, from the legal perspective. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you. This is Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. Councilmember Seed Friedrichs, the, um, the overarching prohibition is that the, um, Constitution of Virginia prohibits localities from funding or giving, uh, public monies to private entities that are not the locality. So, um, sums of money spent that are not budgeted specifically for, um, a purpose or donated are going to be problematic. And there's no way to do that. I think in the past, we've not done that and localities don't do that because there's not a good way to fairly apportion that.
And the, and what we did for the restaurants with the dine on Herndon was because we were taxing them?
Treating everyone the same. I, I think we were treating everyone the same and I don't believe that I came, uh, that was in place before I came, but I want to say that that was a budgeted item.
It was. We, we did not single out restaurants. We had every single restaurant on that list and we didn't do specific, uh, videos or outreach or anything as a, as a government. It was for everybody.
So if we didn't single out, I, I guess where, where I'm headed to is if we don't single out a specific business, if we, um, support all businesses equally, um, in terms of, you know, publicity, is that still, you know, not permissible?
That would, that would probably pass muster, but I think we already do that in several areas. So you may, I don't want to say, you know, speak for the town manager again, but you may want to check and see what we're already doing, um, on the website and other places.
So I, I know what we're doing, um, and I guess the reason why I'm bringing it up is that I don't think it's generating the, um, and this isn't really a, a point for you, um, Madam Town Attorney, but I don't think it's generating the kind of, um, response that I would, and, and I could be completely wrong about this, but, um, that the businesses, uh, need. So, anyway, all right. Well, uh, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Anybody for Roundtable? Did I see your hand, Cesar? No? Okay. Anybody? Uh, Sheila.
Well, on the note about helping our businesses, I will say that I was really pleased to see the videos. I think we've had two go out that HCTV did, Mayor, and they all had a very nice eclectic assortment of businesses. And I thought that was really neat and made me want to go to the barber shop when I saw the barber. Normally wouldn't want to go to the barber shop, but everything, it looked really nice and it was very inviting. So I think we're doing what we can.
Um, and that, that is all coming out of Dennis's office. It's all, all him. Um, on the same vein, I was, um, we, Dennis Holste called me, this is Lisa, um, speaking. The, Dennis Holste called me yesterday about the mayor's new business breakfast, which would typically be coming up in October, which obviously we're not going to pull, um, pull people into a room, but he is looking at options of doing a couple of different WebEx type items, maybe one at a breakfast hour and one at like a happy hour type hour. We typically have around 20 to 25 businesses that come, plus the council and the chamber. I know you guys are dying for another WebEx meeting in your life, but, but stay tuned for that information. And, um, we're hoping, the reason we're blocking it into smaller groups is we think we may have a bigger turnout because we're finding that like at chamber meetings and PTA meetings and things like that, more people come because you can do it from where you already are. And we didn't want them to get too big. So that's another outreach we're trying to do to our new businesses, which are in a particular tough spot, being new during all of this. So if you have other ideas, keep them coming. Any, um, um, Sheila, did you have anything else for Roundtable? Okay. Anybody else? All right. Well, Mr. Town Manager, do you have further comments for us this evening?
I think I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. So that, um, that does conclude our agenda this evening. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, this is Olem. I, I, um, move that we adjourn, seeing there's no other business.
Baker will second that.
All right. Motion to adjourn made by, uh, Sheila and seconded by Jen. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Olem, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Baker, yes.
Councilmember Diagola?
Diagola, yes.
Councilmember DeCall?
Call, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Phil McKenna, yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Uh, Merkel, yes. And that motion carries and we stand adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you, everybody.